Well, sometimes I don't know if that's good enough or I've done something awful bad to be in trouble.
Doesn't matter how good of a job you do.
You could always do better. Well, that too, but I know it's it's a challenge. Sometimes it feel like you're just trying to pound sand, but it.
You guys were talking today with the other day. I said, well, they're got ready. That's the thing. They got started on the last slide and probably halfway through it somewhere done, but now this rain's going to wash it out against. They're going to go back to the beginning and start over again.
Yeah.
One guy goes, I can just start the ones I haven't got done yet and go backwards. He goes, if you go that way, then these people never get done. After there can be a lot of it never get done because they can't keep up this this time of year.
Yeah.
Quick question. Have we heard anything from Jeff on that contract with senior engineer?
I haven't, but he's been out of town too. He's still at town conference feedback.
He is going to be down here this morning also.
I've heard from, I know he was at his mandatory conference.
We only got one every year.
Got two. Rales got two.
Do they? Sheriff's got two. Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's got two left, actually. Me, he got two.
We're one of you that's only got one.
Commissioners only go one. You guys are part time, right?
My phone went off twice yesterday. You sure Sunday? I don't think they got that part time memo.
No. You got holidays off too, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Weekends and holidays.
Yeah.
All right, this time we'll call the county commissioner, reserve favor of court, senate agenda, approve the man's favor, approve favor.
No, no.
No in favor? If you don't have any, at least not yet. DRO.
Yeah. We did our three interviews and I'd like to recommend we vote on accepting Hal as being our engineer for the bridge out on Rose Bud.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll say.
On favor?
Have you got a contract for it?
Service on corrects cover letters.
Just standard motor contract. Um, plus these are the revisions to whatever that contract was. And. Basically. Details and man hours in the estimate not to exceed over the construction, engineering, construction and designing here. Basically for design, we're looking at 94,900.
Yeah.
And construction, engineering, 65,000. So that includes all the construction. Pretty well. I was going to head there after I leave here today. I was running pretty good today. Yeah, probably by now it's settled down. And we're ready to get started.
How much rain you guys had?
I know north of here, north farther, Kelly got five and a half inches. But down here, we only got.
Yeah, three to four.
So we got sad.
So if you want time to look these over, I could pick them up next week sometime or next season today. It's your choice on that. Good job on that. Apparently still talking about start on the 26th. Is that what? Yeah, probably. It looks like we've got a July 1st, 2025. We're supposed to have plans ready. We need to go out for bid. So possibly. You know, it could start in 2025, but on like early 2026, kind of like this year. Contracts would pretty well pull up. We just had a Gasconade County bridge that we had a December completion date on, but we weren't getting any bidders or plan holders. So we moved that completion date back to 2026. And then we've got like eight different plan holders. We had three bidders on it. The bids came in really good on that. So. It's just there's a lot of work out there. Everybody's got the plate full. I'll make a motion. We said go ahead and sign it. Yeah, the actual contracts, we're going to need Gene and Dave, is that right?
Yeah.
How much do you guys charge for like general engineering? Um, advice type stuff. Well, I can. It's. I'll have, I got an email back at home there. That's where we're in to that Gasconade County. I think it's somewhere over a hundred and something. An hour to do that. I can, I'll email you that when I get back. I've got, I've got approached that. It needs to be biggest time, best mode.
I meet with me and then we got a copy and another.
You said it.
There wasn't no place on.
Oh, dear.
Send one for you.
She'll be through you.
I asked Mo Doc to meet with me and right, they emailed me and said, you know, there's nothing we can do to help you. Now it's. And I need to do something, but I, you know, we're not engineers and right, you know, but I, like I said, I just, I was curious to. Yeah, I think it's part of business. It probably wasn't charging anything. It's an ongoing type deal. Yeah. Be an hourly rate. Let's see, come off the highway like I do right now. And instead of hauling 300 loads of clay and going 75 feet up this way, you know, to get to three to one. Mm hmm. You know, I think I'll come up with another idea. That's down the road. Yeah, I'll, I'll send an email with that, that info. That's more sand and sort of deal with. I think once you go out there and look at the bridge, there's a, there's a telephone line. Three and two. Yes, two letters. You keep one and I'll take another one. And. You keep one of these. Take the other two. Think we got it? But I think all the utilities is a telephone line. Okay. Yeah, I'll. Thank you, guys. We appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, I look forward to it. Yeah, just let me know what you think after you look at it. Okay, yeah. And I'll, like I said, I'll send you that email and go. What?
I'll try to get it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You should be turkey hunting today.
Well, I should. I had a little bit of cough this morning.
Thank you, guys.
Ah, my kids is taking up the slack. Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Inside that thing and shoot them right at your ear. They come right by you. Until I go turkey hunting, then they will go up.
I seen an Amish guy in the store over the weekend and I told him, he said he was gonna turkey, ask if they sold turkey permits in there and I said, go back there in the frozen food section, take a shotgun you just got at that gun auction over there and I said, go back there and just fire it and you can get one that's already frozen and everything you need. All he does is giggle at me.
You got your stuff.
That one, well, that, that's Max's letter. That's just, well, if you wanna read it, that's just stating about the, uh,
Yeah.
increase in pay and stuff for law enforcement.
It's gotta be a signing page somewhere.
Yeah. There's a couple for you.
You got a motion?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead and approve it and I'll say.
That one will be signed by everybody, all the commissioners. That's the, uh.
That's the only.
This is, no, this is my policy for, uh, retention. This will be signed by, that's signed by you. That one is signed by you.
You go where it goes.
And so put these back in order, so I've got mine with me too.
Man, yeah, that's my letter.
There you go.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um. So I'll have that money deposited by the end of the day. The three million.
Yeah.
You just sign.
You just hold your breath. Or don't, don't hold your breath.
Thank you, gentlemen. I will get this signed up and I'll let you know, uh, what the state of Missouri says. DPS.
You can move the tax release. Oh no. That's all of them?
These are the first of the applications for the senior tax for these. And they have been through the collector's office, they've been through the assessor's office and the county clerk's office, they've all passed everything. And now it's just ready for final commission approval.
And we do all at one time?
You can do them all at one time or you can sit down and look at each one individually.
They've gone through her office, her office.
And Daniel's office.
And Daniel's office.
Like we can.
There have, there have been no issues with any of these that have been brought up.
If there is any issues, there are.
There are a couple that have been set aside for further reviews.
Yeah, I'll make a motion we prove more, I'll say.
No favor?
How many total is that, Commissioner?
I will have to get you a total count.
Roughly two hundred, one hundred, five hundred.
I think she said she had three hundred.
Three hundred.
Well, she's had three hundred applications. I'm gonna say this is probably hundred and fifty, hundred and twenty-five to hundred and fifty.
Two and a half boxes.
Thank you, sir.
No carnage yet?
No, we did get, uh, two of the tractor cars signed, uh, signage done Friday.
Nice.
Signage meaning then L Fisher, is that correct? Correct. Thank you, sir.
The other ones are due, like, due a week, isn't it? Or something like that?
Yeah, um, once they, uh, once they get up there, so, you know, we should start seeing them, uh, in about two weeks or something. Two to three weeks.
I still haven't got hold of where we'll get. Yeah. I remember did have a date that you had to make that. July first.
You know, July, just get ahold of them, or be able to talk to somebody.
He's got a couple of contacts with three of them.
Yeah, I've got a. I got an inside. I don't know if it'll help, but I'm gonna. I'm gonna try to call them over the weekend. I'm sure they don't wanna talk then.
I remember Greg or Ricky got trying to get an intersection there. Um, well, I got a real. Course to trust people.
Yeah.
He just did, he said, I'll just do the bash of mercy later. Could never say a word about it.
Yeah, I'm talking to the auditors real quick.
Sure.
Yeah. This is Dave, our staccato clerk, Jimmy McCrave, side of the, Andy Holmes, the western district commissioner, Kevin Davis, the eastern district commissioner, Roger Graves, the coroner, Stacy Gold, sheriff. Hello. And I think that covers everybody. Waylon, Bill, Mary, these are the auditors.
Asking you guys.
Oh. He's down the other, down at the other, until the justice center is the sheriff.
Make sure you introduce yourself.
Eight plus tires.
You're live on camera.
Thank you all. Eight plus tires were, uh, men.
That's wrong. That's wrong in so many ways.
Sheriff, does that mean that you got, you popped another tire? Yes.
You've done investigations with a bad tire. I guess I can explain every year we get an audit. See, every year we have to have an audit because of the funding of the jail. We, we have to pay for an audit every year and have it done for the whole county.
It's not a bad thing.
No, it's not. It's a good thing.
And this goes beyond the normal requirement.
Well, then we still get the state audits.
Right.
The state still does their audit, but we have an audit every year with a company, outside company coming in, then we have the state audit that comes down every four years now.
Now it'll be every six.
Every six. It started every two years when I first started here and then it went to four and oh six.
And this is going to continue until the jail is, uh, bonus paid off?
Yes.
Is that estimated, how many years now, sir? Thirty-nine. Twenty thirty-nine is what it. Not thirty-nine years, but until.
Fourteen years.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, fourteen years, basically.
Thank you, sir. Try and get it paid off by twenty twenty-eight. So the bottom line is people are saying the county needs to be audited. You're actually auditing six times as much as the state requires because of jail.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the audit is all aspects of the county.
Now, the state audit is published online, these audits, uh, that you get annually, you can put them on the county website.
They're available, they're available on request. It's chemically as well.
Thing I found out about being on the Dixon City Council, there's two things you can do by petition in a four class city. You can have a state request, you know, request the state auditor come in and audit, or you can request a valid issue to do away with the city. That's the only, that's the only two things you can do by petition. I, I, I thought you could do valid initiatives for the city, not the four class city. So those are the only two things that you can do.
Are you still on the Dixon City Council? When'd you get off of it?
Uh, last week.
Last week. Do you have any idea if the city of Dixon annexed anything in on, uh, Ballpark Road, like Seventh or Eighth Street or any of that in there?
I don't think that's happened yet.
Don't think it has yet?
Yeah. There may, there may have been some discussion, but I don't think anything.
Has happened yet. Well, I know where the county had, where the county lines at, and then if that would have happened, it would have, it would have changed it for us and it, uh.
Yeah, if, if you look at that, GIS, the map of Dixon, there's little cutouts, you know, all around and, yeah. Kind of, double did that happen?
Yeah.
Yeah, hundred and fifty years of, um, little pieces of parts on there.
City of Dixon looks like a map of Lake of Ozarks. They're just fingers off of it everywhere.
City of Dixon looks like a map of Lake of the Ozarks, certain things are out there everywhere.
Yeah, it is rough.
All right, we're doing.
Sorry, you have a good day.
Take care.
Yeah, old boy, old boy last night, going back to the weights. He's going up the hill, got a little bit of a game. Head by now. Hey, you don't even need to get a thing, fell off, you know, it was out of that. He takes off, he gets to the top of the hill, going right by O'Reilly. Woo, take a ride. Right front headlight. I just got stopped five minutes ago, it's bottom of the hill. They gave him a paper, told you gotta get it fixed and turn it into the police department. Been five days. This morning, he pulled back Quincy's out there, trying to stick his hand in that little area and with that headlight, oh, I was dying laughing.
Most new cars are just the bulb. It ain't like the old ones, replace the old headlights.
Well, some of these you gotta replace the whole.
Yeah. The Dodges, I got like four of them down there.
I think, is it the Escalade you gotta replace? Quite a bit of it.
The LEDs in them.
Yeah. Like nine hundred bucks.
That's cheap.
Huh?
That's cheap, right, Mike.
Easy bag. That was your conference.
Oh, you know, almost endgame.
Aren't they fun?
Do you approve your golf handicap?
Part of the old lawyer, he'll meet me play two rounds a week before I went to law school and hasn't told a club since.
No, I know another one. We're going across the street, we had a golf tournament on Fort Remember, and they go, I got attorney coming, so all attorneys play golf. No, I get one that brings an old ratty bag and old, old wooden headed driver. I'm like, just sit there and keep score. Morning. How many people did we have downstairs last night? I can't remember. Uh, there was quite a few down there.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah, that's the only thing, uh, we had, uh, fifteen people.
Fifteen?
Fifteen people, uh, that's the people that we actually had in the shelter. And then we had up to eight volunteers.
Yes. Good showing down there.
And we're getting better with every time.
Buddy was there.
Yeah, buddy was there.
Buddy come over, tell me he's running with me. We'll go in the closed session. This time we'll call the regular county, or this time we're gonna close session zero law six, in that little two, one, four personnel.
I'll say.
No favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make sure it was over the weekend, if any?
Mm-hmm. Same as always, I've got the same two low water crossings on the same road that washes out about every time it...
And those two rivers, but also don't all those cool river crossing...
They're on Tave Road, yep.
Basically some...
Tave Road and one on, got another one on Creek Road. And the one on Creek, I don't know what, that probably had been in Charlie's time, but they poured the sides on it and the top of it, it's gravel and when it washes out, it's met up because there's a slide that was there, but then poured the deck on it. So it just takes, sides are there, it just means four poured in. Why there wasn't one poured in it, I don't know, and it just washes it, gravel when it goes over it, it just washes the gravel out of it and needs...
Turn, turn, turn to the corner.
Yeah, the, the sides are poured, the aprons on the edges.
It stays there, the corner stays there and the gravel leaves.
(laughing)
Yeah, it's a stupid problem, it's okay.
Yeah, it's... I don't think it'll take much to pour the core on it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna measure it and find out. Oh boy, makes these up again today or... When I was on this side of it, it didn't seem like we got paid to...
Doesn't say for an inmate.
Oh, I got dressed to the Sessors Office, so they said, "Are you going that way?" Sure, so somehow they ended up at the Sessors Office.
Who's that, Kyle? You wanna sign Kylie or you...
I've already signed it.
You sign, yep.
Oh, darn it. Whew! That's a big ten dollars for Plasky County Sheriff's Office.
There you go, move.
Making money for this county. Day ten dollars going into general revenue.
Will be offset by that thirty that just went out, so... Get two more of those and we'll be even.
Oh, I might have signed...
Uh-oh.
Yep, I think I went...
Okay, well, Daniel Rose. But you're just proving Daniel's...
I went a little too deep. Just keep going, I'm spying everything, yep, you made me mess up here.
What'd I do?
I signed somebody's time sheet that didn't belong to me. I was talking to you and I put a time sheet in front of him, signing everybody's.
You sign mine?
I don't care.
All right. Gentlemen, have a good day.
Keep up good work, Sheriff.
Thank you.
You're all as well. Well, yeah, we're working on it, it's a challenge. We got rain to deal with. Andy Darrell was wanting to know what kind of road damage that we had, and I told him this is my typical washout, just...
Casual break.
About what you got too.
How about yourself, sir?
Yeah, about the same, Darrell, I mean, the Gaskinades just now kind of receding, so we'll be able to tell this afternoon if we had any more.
So at this point, there's not enough data on road damage, you're waiting for the river to go down?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All the, all the Tavran Creek stuff was, I mean, kind of, we didn't have anything major, no bridge washouts or anything.
Yeah, you got a week, next Thursday, Friday, it's never around a storm. You get it all done. Give it a duck some back. You gonna pour a top on that one?
I'm gonna look at it, measure, find out, I don't think it'll cost twenty-five hundred bucks to fix it.
Get it right.
I mean, it just, yeah. Every time it rains, you lose three hundred dollars worth of rocks, so I mean, it... I don't understand why the, the deck wasn't poured on it. Well, you know what saves the county money, we usually just take a machine down there and dip stuff back out of the creek and put on it, smooth it off, keep hauling light rock in there and wasting it. I mean, there's no sense in it.
I'm trying to remember what Hector told me about stuff they had before it was approved. Your road down in Big Fanny?
Yeah, that's probably the Ross Bridge stuff, yep.
Yep.
He said a couple...
Couple others.
Yeah, you say, he acts like about two... We shouldn't be getting the money for that, I think, about any time.
That's what he said. It's two hundred thousand?
It's about two sixty or seventy, I think.
Yeah, he told me last night.
Yeah, and I, I need it, I'm getting, you know, a lot of, and... Sure season floaters and stuff, I, I just, it's got me scared, somebody's gonna drive off that bridge, of course, the guardrail and everything's still laying on top of it, and we got cones and tape and... But it's, it's not safe.
You got a company to put the guardrail back up?
Yeah, that Charlie got the company to look at it and, uh, they're gonna, gave the bid on it, Greg's got all the information on it, I don't even know who it was. I had the plates are bolted to the side of the bridge and they got four bolts in the plate, then the, the upright, it's got one big bolt through it, and I don't know if it's just was threaded that much and it pulled the bolts out or how they can't get, you gotta hang over the side of the bridge to be able to fix it back, and I don't, uh... And the one on upstream sides broke off, but the one on the lower side didn't break it, didn't cause no damage at all did, other than just some debris hanging on it when the river went down, but...
See, they got the garage going back up. Right one.
Garage door, it's not working though.
Let's see, give me his boy, does he lease that land off, little 1033? Let's see, give me, boy, did he lease that land up on thirty-three.
Next Wednesday, our building will be delivered on shop site.
Darrell, anything interesting happen on the weekend I didn't hear about?
Not that I'm aware of, that was the reason for asking the sheriff and the emergency management director and the two of you. Uh, it does appear that there was some significant damage outside of our company, but I've not heard of anything else.
No.
I was downstairs listening to the report. No. Everything went north and south, that was the harder. And what came through here came through so fast that when you get near the rain, everybody else got.
You certainly did, when you talk about coming through bass, it certainly did result in a lot of wind, a lot of breeze and stuff letting it down. But that's a big difference having trees down and having hoes down.
When it comes through, we didn't get the, the high winds that they got from South West Missouri got, they were getting seventy, eighty mile an hour winds they threw there. Here it was like forty, forty-five. I was listening to the reports coming in from all over the county downstairs last night, and seemed pretty reasonable.
But here. Can you repeat the number of people who were in the shelter last night, sir?
I think it was fifteen and five or six, there was like twenty-one of them.
So you're saying fifteen in our shelter here?
Five or six was the
Volunteers.
Volunteers.
Ah, okay, okay.
They're starting to build up a pretty good stack of volunteers, which is a good thing. Yeah, if you ever go down there during that, you can see the National Weather Service, they got everything going on. National Weather Service on two computers. Everybody lit up down there, you can see exactly what's going on through the whole county and follow the other counties besides it. The National Weather Service, we're watching that one, it's kind of amazing how they they pinpoint it pretty good.
I got a little clue, and they want you to pay for them. We have the Weather Channel.
The K Y three does a good job of it. They stick to, stick to it until its threats are over with and.
Yeah, they'll cut in on anything and keep.
While it's going on.
Yep. Yep.
You know, that one couple of the hook that was below us, I was watching it, and it goes, the National Weather Service showed it shifting further east instead of going northeast. It kind of went like that instead of normal track, it's straight northeast.
I had pictures, what's that place at the lake called, in Topside or?
The roof.
Got a bunch of damage to it.
They took the roof off, well, peeled the roof.
Yeah, I was trying to find somebody who posted pictures of it, I can't find.
You go to Facebook, go to the Lake Does, Arc area, whatever it is.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, we, we escaped quite a bit, which was a good thing.
I guess just here in Newburgh, didn't they have a water rescue or something? About as close as to home as I think we had any trouble.
Somewhere down there, West Plains, they had one Jeep, I guess, went off into a culvert. Was pinned to the culvert, another truck washed on top of the Jeep.
Oh boy.
Two people there, two of the three in the Jeep.
Oh lord.
Somewhere down in that area. You know, the Easter. They're, all the families are out moving around, heading home. We're lucky.
You know, I get asked on a weekly basis probably that, uh, can you put bigger culverts in to carry the water?
You gotta take it to another culvert, that's gotta be a big, just as big or bigger as it goes downhill. It's like one old subdivision here, the big culvert start at the top of the hill, and they got smaller going downhill.
Yeah, and that don't make, that don't make a lick of change.
That subdivision out here, Buck Warren is just, it
Might be hell there.
Yeah.
I just couldn't understand that.
Well, you know, if, if a person gets normal, just steady rain and runoff, most of the time, your stuff will carry it, but when you get five inches of rain in two, a couple days, when you got I forty-four flooded and you get J highway shut down and stuff, I mean, you can't put anything in big enough to carry that kind of water.
No, you can't.
It, it, it's.
Well, you look at Nora, they got them pumps in there to keep pumping it out, they can't keep up with them.
I've got a couple of people right now in the subdivision that when they built their houses, the builder, their house is lower than the road, and when the water, when it rains.
Runs right through.
Right, and I'm trying right now to figure out a way to help them keep the water out of their garages, and it's a
I got a customer sits on.
I got it slowed down, but it's still, it, it's a road that don't need a crown in it, it needs slope back to the ditch, and I, I'm gonna have to do a little bit more work to see if I can get it totally stopped, but.
In West Plains, I put a sump pump in there. It couldn't handle that, but a second sump pump in there, it'll handle up to a certain amount of rain, then I put the third sump pump in, now it handles it completely. But it's one of them tri-levels, it's part of it, the crawl space.
Yeah.
In the basement, wow, that crawl space, it gets so much water coming in, it's unreal.
I know, it, uh.
Those pumps run.
On Facebook, Tru's, this McDonald's out here being torn down.
Two o'clock today, I think.
At two o'clock it closes.
Yeah. Thirty? I think they said. Facebook said today.
Two o'clock today, they reopen in August sometime around.
Totally, totally tearing the whole thing down.
Yeah, it's all completely getting re-poured down.
The owner of that goes to church with my wife, and they're gonna re-rebuild it.
And you may have an answer on one item, they were initially trying to take that Euro Wayne's bill, put it in the court house, we see him, do you know, but if anything happened with that?
No.
Okay.
You see, the neon park started, they finally got the signs.
Yeah, they put a couple of signs up.
Are common, yeah.
They come in one, two, three a week.
Once a shandig on it.
May seventh, yeah. Seven P L, I think.
Yeah, and they're gonna light it. Yeah, the board meeting up there for the park.
They're bringing in some of the cars, the car show, the fifty-sixes and fifty-sevens, they're gonna line up by the stage part of it, you know, the car is gonna be crossed through. So I asked him, I said, why don't you take the grass over here to them cedars and make a parking lot, because you're gonna need it when they, they've already booked twenty-five tour buses. It's already booked.
May nine, may nine.
Twenty-five tour buses are already booked to stop there. Where you gonna put them? I said, you need to take that grassy area across from over there, turn it in, now they're looking at bidding it out for a parking lot. I said, I got a parking lot, because you're gonna need it. Hello? It's my name at yahoo dot com. Yeah. No, G, just G Newkirk at yahoo dot com. This cell phone.
Yahoo or Yahoo.
Yeah. Yeah, when Cable America went out, it just like I tried to get them all changed, all of them to get changed, like the Ethics Commission had them all, I forgot that one. I got it squared away.
Oh, you gotta have passwords to keep up with everything.
Oh, no, I got them all in here in notes, passwords to each one of these things, and then then all of a sudden, when Cable America went out, I just had, I was scrambling for all the emails to get the new email out.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion return, I'll say it.
Forget it, Miss Order, she's already keeps sending them.
Uh, center back says it's not even off the road yet, just makes it up.
Yeah.